All right, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen from May 19 to order. And I need a clerk pro tem. So could I have a motion to make Peter since he's ready?
So made Alan.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by?
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay, Jim.
Move on.
All right, roll call, Alan.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Patrick, yes, Peter?
Yes.
Okay, so it's four zero, four zero zero.
Yeah.
All right, Peter, could you give me a roll call, please?
Okay, present our Chairman Troppiano, Member Slavin, Member Moniz, Clerk Pro Tem Titlebaum, Town Administrator Sullivan, and Town Council Bowen, and we also have Town Moderator Smith.
Okay, please rise and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Next up, announcements, and let's start with, I don't know, how about Alan?
Well, thank you. As we all know, virtually everything is canceled on a daily basis. We're up to September now, so I have no announcements as far as events.
Okay, next, let's see, how about Jim? Any announcements?
Any announcements? No.
All right, Peter?
Yeah, I just have one. The town lost a gentleman who, although he wasn't directly a town employee, was very involved with the town for a number of years. His name was Russell Holt. And he did just about all of the dive work on moorings and so on and so forth in the town. He did a lot of work for what was then the Harbor Masters Department. It's now the Department of Natural Resources. So I'd like to have the board have a moment of silence for Mr. Holt if we could.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's a shame, Russell did my moorings. He's a great guy.
Russell did it despite everybody's moorings.
Yeah, he was super.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, citizens' comments, we have none, so we'll go on to board comments. Oh, how about you, Alan?
Let me go a couple minutes, a couple things I gotta check off. I'll come back.
Jim, do you have any board comments?
No, I think we'll touch on things later in the meeting.
Okay, all right, Peter?
Just a general comment. You know, we'll come up with this more when we get to the, you know, the virus update. But, you know, I'm really proud that in a town this size, especially with an aging population, and I hate to say the word only, but we've only had 11 deaths. And it could have been a lot more. Frankly, I, when this started out, you saw the magnitude of what this disease was doing in other places. I was frankly concerned that we'd lose 100 or 200 residents over this. And, you know, people have really, I think, stepped up and done a pretty good job. You know, we can always do better, but I'm really proud of the way our citizens stepped up, the way that, you know, I see most of them wearing masks whenever I go out. They're in stores and so on and so forth. And I think that the citizens need to be praised for their response, because it made our jobs a lot easier too.
Well, and you know, just let me jump on that a minute because, you know, you know, that is also attributed to the fact that they listened to the word that was gotten out to them by our task force, led by Mr. Sullivan and the Board of Health and others, fire departments, you know, everybody, municipal maintenance, everybody who's in that task force. And they, they really, they took it serious, they got on it early, they kept an eye on it, they followed what was going on, and the citizens took them seriously. And that's the reason why we are where we're at today. I mean, that's really it in a nutshell. And I gotta praise everybody for that, including the, including the residents, but also that task force has done a terrific job. All right, let's go on to appointments, please.
Gotta go back to me first.
Back to you, oh, you, oh, sorry, sorry Alan, we wouldn't want to miss you. Go ahead, buddy.
I know you're trying to shorten the meeting.
By about an hour, no, go ahead. Go ahead.
Ten minutes anyways. The Veterans Council, in coordination with the Wareham militia, will be doing Memorial Day. They'll start it, I believe, at eight o'clock at, I think it's Center Park, with, you know, the special, they're doing sticks altogether. You'll get put out, the problem is, is that we're still under the government decree of having more than 10 people go at a gathering. So this will be coordinated and this is go, but unfortunately, most people, they, maybe they go on a car and sit outside in their car and don't go where the group is, they can do it. But it's a very difficult year this year for everything. But, you know, Julio, I think, from the VFW is putting flags out the next couple of days between the militia and the veterans, it'll be a nice little event.
Okay, what else?
That's enough.
That's it, okay. All right, Peter, let's do the appointments, Old Colony Elder Services.
Yeah, first off, we have, I'll make a motion to appoint Missy Deeseck of Onset as a member to the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors for a term to expire no later than June 30, 2021. I believe this is a position she's held for a few years, so it's essentially a reappointment.
Okay, a motion made by Peter, seconded by?
Seconded by Alan.
Alan, any discussion?
Yeah, Missy was a past director, correct?
Correct.
And is she on the Council of Aging as a member? Have you received a, a letter from the Council of Aging suggesting and recommending her for the appointment?
I believe me.
I'd like to see those, I like Missy, I know Missy. It's, it's a process.
It's, it's in your packet.
I, no, I saw that, I'm saying it's processed. Have we gotten a recommendation from the council on aging? Is she a member of the council on aging? She's no longer the director. So it should be someone from the Council of Aging or the director.
Well, and she's getting, this is getting appointed to Elder Services, Old Colony Elder Services, and we have a letter from them requesting.
If you read the information, there's certain rules, and I didn't see a recommendation.
Well, she's not getting appointed to the Council of Aging.
But the recommendation comes from the council.
No, it doesn't, it comes from Elder Services, where she's getting appointed.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it says right in the letter, I got the letter right here, it's on, in the packet.
I have it too.
Well, she was, here's, here's, I think, what Jim is remarking upon. He's noting, they noted in the letter that she is the current OCES Board Director from Wareham, but that's, that's relating to that title. It's not saying that she needed to be the Director of the COA at Wareham, if that makes any sense.
And she hasn't, she's not getting reappointed to the Director of getting appointed to the COA. I mean, you know, at some point she will, at some point, and then they'll.
But it does, it does say further down here that the town is invited to nominate one representative to the OCES Board of Directors for 2021, following recommendations from the Council on Aging.
Oh.
So.
Can I clarify that for everybody?
Yeah, go ahead, Alan.
What they do is, every year, the Council of Aging votes to have a person representative with Old Colony. And they're really, as Jim said, normally there is a letter that goes out, you know, for us saying that they, that's who they voted for. And that person gets appointed to that particular board. It's a yearly thing, it has nothing to do with being the Director of the Council of Aging or anything. Could be anybody that's on the council, or anybody they so designate. And that's how it's always done, so. Jim's comment about we should have a letter from the Council of Aging saying they voted for her actually should be done. It's just a formality, it's how it's supposed to be.
No, I get it. Well, let me ask the Chairman something. Why don't I withdraw my motion and restate it as a conditional motion upon receipt of approval from the Council on Aging? And then at least we do that step, and then it takes effect once we get the letter.
Why don't we let the Council of Aging have a virtual meeting, have a discussion, and send us a letter, and we can appoint thereafter. Let's not make their decision for them.
Fair. All right, I'll withdraw my motion then. And I'll, Patrick, I'll follow up on this with the Council on Aging, make sure we get the letter.
Well, just let them know that they need.
They'll let them know that there's a vacancy.
Correct, thank you, not, you should do this and that.
Right.
That's my opinion.
Contact Sharon Frank, she's the Chair, I think, of the Council of Aging, right?
Who's our liaison to the Council of Aging? Is it Mary?
Mary was, but I've been picking up some of the mess.
Okay, and.
Community events, next on community events, please.
Okay, let's see, for community events, I move that we appoint Jean Conotin, 185 Great Neck Road, Wareham, as a member to the Community Events Committee for a term to expire no later than June 30, 2022. And we do have her request for reappointment.
Reappointment.
I have a question. Peter, I think that should say 2023. She was appointed in 2017, I believe they're three-year terms.
Yeah, I noticed that that was, it was couched as a two-year term, but is this a consequence of something not being staggered that now we're staggering?
No, I think we just made an error.
Well, she takes it off, out of the book, so she must have done it for a reason.
Well, I'm on the group there, and I know it's 2017 when she was appointed, and it's three years, so she's up, you know, at the end of June of this year, 2020. So it should be 2023.
Yeah, I, yeah, in her, in her letter to us, Patrick, it does say that she's served for three years on it, so it does, that does suggest a three-year term.
It does, but like I say, she usually takes them out of the book, so. I'm not sure that it isn't something that we're trying to change and line, and line up, I don't know what it is. I don't have an answer to that question.
Well, why don't we just put this off then, if we don't know the dates of time? I'm in favor of appointing her, I have.
We'll do it next week, it's not a problem.
Yeah, but that way, that way we can confirm whether it's in the book for a three-year, or if some reason there's a two-year or something like that.
Yeah, because she's, she's using the book, and we are fixing some of those staggered things. So, and I'm not sure that this isn't one of those cases, so we'll wait and see. So we'll do it next week. We're gonna meet, we gotta meet every week now anyway, because now we're gonna be going forward with town meetings, so we're gonna have to deal with that.
Yep.
All right, let's see, update for COVID-19, Derek, do you have anything you want to update?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, you know, going from the beginning of this, we've had a total of 175 cases in the community. Forty-three cases of the confirmed cases have recovered, and 14 confirmed cases have passed. Four of those are town, they're all sort of residents, but four were town residents, nine from nursing homes, and one from assisted living. So we currently have 118 confirmed cases. And this should just, you know, we've said a little constant there. Let everybody know the duration of each one of these cases as well. It's not a, it's not a one-week or a two-week issue. So that's what we've been, we've been facing. So as well with that, you have received the information, the email earlier today. We're moving to open up the beaches this Saturday. One of the big things I want people to know about it is there are still restrictions on it. This is gonna sound bizarre, but if you cannot socially distance, yet the beach, you still need to have a mask on. You know, they say not in the water. If you're going to be lounging on the beach, it's not a distance of six feet between the, between the towels, if you will, it's 12 feet. So there, we're gonna be sending out the, the rules and letting people know. And we're really hoping people can be respectful. A big thing is we do not have the bathroom facilities open yet. The porta, porta, portable bathrooms, or porta potties, if you will, are not on site either, so please plan accordingly. Understand, those facilities are not open and not available right now. We're, we're trying to get guidance from the DPH on beach water sampling as well. And usually, we start doing the sampling the week after Memorial Day. Maybe hard souls going into the, going into the water, but I don't know too many right now. So that's something to consider. So this is one of the big steps. People asked about playgrounds, you know, not playgrounds, and if you see the governors, that would, governors. Four phases, that's phase two. One of our big concerns on that is we will not be sanitizing the playgrounds. So we need to, you know, so we're not ready to have those open at, at this time, but we'll continue to get our guidance from the Commonwealth and make the decisions that we feel are best for the community to keep our community safe and to keep our community going.
Okay, the other thing was, is that Derek and I talked about coming up soon, some of the restaurants are gonna be, that have outdoor seating are gonna be able to have outdoor seating, basically, they're gonna be able to seat outside. And one of the things Derek and I talked about was him trying to determine where they could have some outdoor seating, whether it meant closing a piece of Merchant's Way for them to have some outdoor seating in order to help the restaurants or something like that. So what I'd like to do is authorize, have the board authorize him to be able to do an evaluation, determine where those areas would be, and to allow him to set up those areas. Because that's something we have to give them permission to do.
When will the restaurants be opening up again?
We don't, we don't know.
Phase, what phase?
That's phase three, I believe.
Just, I'll give you some advanced information. Today's meeting with the Lieutenant Governor. They're having special meetings with the restaurant industry and all the stakeholders. They're trying to move that up a little bit in the process. So it might be phase two instead.
Okay.
Okay, so anyway, Derek's gonna have to do some homework here and try to do some work to make this happen. So let's just give him the, go ahead, Jim.
Then he can come back to us with his recommendations, and we can say, yeah, great, fine. If we have concerns, we can, we can discuss them with him.
Well, I don't see why we can't, why he can't make that decision. He's typically, he's typically in charge of buildings and grounds anyway, but this is town, this would be town property, whether it was a roadway or whatever. And all I'm gonna do, all we're doing.
Use the roads under us, right?
Yeah, right, now we're doing it, all we're doing.
I dislike the thought going on here.
Yeah, there should be, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, Selectmen, you need to interrupt. If it's on Merchant's Way, Merchant's Way is a piece of town property, it's actually not a street. But if it's sidewalks and things such as that, that's, you know, the selectmen, if we were closing that, that, I'd have to take a look at it just for the survey, if, if there was that little street in between El Mariachi and such, that would probably need a selectman. But the other thing is too, you guys hold, do the licenses for the common Vic and stuff like that, so it'd be an extension of their, their premises.
Right.
Well, through you, could I ask Town Council an opinion? Is this something that can, that can be delegated?
Go ahead, yes. Well, it depends on which part. If it's just simply presiding over control of town property, not streets, but, you know, an area where it's just town property, Derek has that power. If it's a street, and it's being closed for a particular event, that's gonna be Board of Selectmen. If you were adopting some kind of whole new traffic regulation, which this doesn't sound like, but just to be complete, that would be the road commissioners. If you're going to have to modify anybody's license to allow them to serve outside of their premises, you know, we're talking about places with liquor licenses then, that's Board of Selectmen pursuant to a public hearing.
Right, yeah, this would be, we wouldn't be extending any of the liquor licenses, because we would have to have a hearing, obviously. So we wouldn't be doing that, that's not what this is about. This is to just allow Derek to find places that he, he can make room for them. Because see, some of the businesses have some outdoor seating and others don't. And it's kind of unfair to say, well, okay, you have some outdoor seating, you don't, you stay closed, and you guys can open. So what we're trying to do is help them out to keep, to help lift these businesses up and give them some benefit that they, they wouldn't ordinarily have on a temporary basis until they can finally get the insides of these places opened on some basis. And, and quicker that it can happen, obviously, the better. So if the governor comes out tomorrow, or in a couple of days, and says, yeah, okay, they can go to outdoor seating, Derek could have his plan in place and say, okay, everybody, you can now use the outdoor seating, this is where we're gonna allow it, and so on and so forth.
So if I, if I understand correctly, even if it gets moved for restaurants to open to phase two, it's a minimum of three weeks from phase one, which officially starts Monday? Am I correct on that?
Well, I know that June 1st is.
Three weeks between phases, right?
June 1st is another, a start of one of the phases, isn't that correct?
It's three weeks between phases, minimum.
Thank you. So plenty of time, and I think it's a great idea, I'm for it. I'd just like to have a little information about how we're gonna proceed moving forward, what, what spaces he believes would be appropriate, just to be kept in the loop. And I don't know, everybody says Merchant's Way is not a street, but it's an accepted street by the town. So that, when you look at the accepted streets and you tell me no.
I'll tell you no, they made an error, they just slapped it on there.
They did.
Maybe you made an error.
No. It's not the town administrators list.
No.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's an easy.
Yeah, so I do just want to clarify, so people understand in the restaurants as well. It wouldn't be serving out there, it would be allowing people to sit in spaces, taking carryout. And it would be, it would not be the town cleaning these tables or taking trash out or anything like that. So you'd need buy-in from the restaurants, so it could cost them some money to do that. Maybe they'd want to do it, maybe they wouldn't, I don't know, but that's just to clarify on that.
But they would still be doing the same thing they're doing at right this minute, is you'd call in, get your order, it's just that, you know, what's gonna happen? And, and what is gonna happen, you can almost bet what's gonna happen over Memorial Day weekend. The people with outdoor seating, you're not gonna stop all the people that are out there from sitting at those seats, not a prayer, it's gonna happen, whether we like it or not.
Well, you can, you can fit in your car.
You can, they're gonna do it, Jim, they're gonna do it, it's gonna happen.
Yeah, technically, technically.
Not saying you can condone it, but it's gonna happen.
So as you move forward, I think the idea for the outdoor seating is so you can increase the number of occupants they could have, because you're gonna have greater seat, greater spacing within the restaurants. So, so that way, you don't just have eight tables.
Well, that's another way to look at it, at some point.
So as, as you move forward, people be able to be, be served outdoors at these tables.
No, that's a good idea, after this phase, what I was thinking, I wasn't thinking of that phase, but yes, you might be right. Maybe it would be a good idea to give them a few extra tables, so they could make a few extra dollars, maybe recoup something somewhere down the road. But for this phase, all I'm talking about is giving them some place where people can take their water. Because right now, they sit in their cars on the property, and they're not supposed to do that either.
Right.
Well, there's another angle to this, you know, we had talked about liquor and said, well, you know, we wouldn't be expanding liquor. I think I read something somewhere in one of the orders, maybe it's just a proposal, but I think it's in one of the orders, where if you are doing a premises change, not an initial license, but for example, if somebody wants to start serving, you know, alcohol outside, that you can do it without notifying a butters now. You can do your hearing without worrying about your butters list anymore. But I'm assuming that you still have to have the hearing, you can't just, you know, we can't just sit here and do it, that it's gotta actually be in the context of a public hearing. Did you see anything about that, Attorney Bowman?
I haven't seen it, but I'll take a look.
Yeah, and again, it might, it might just be an idea that was thrown out there, but I can't remember if it was actually something that was, that was allowed, or whether it was just an idea. But they wanted to do sort of expedited premises expansion, you know, along the same lines as this with the alcohol as well.
I'll check it out.
Thanks.
Again, for information, Peter, that it's being proposed, it hasn't been finalized yet.
Okay.
But it's definitely being proposed.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so what do you want to do?
No, go ahead, I mean, look, look at the spaces, I mean, I don't think decision's gonna be made tomorrow. We're meeting every week, in the next phase, it's the end of June, is it?
No, we're gonna have to be waiting every week, yeah, we gotta meet every week.
Yeah.
I think, I wouldn't take the phase timeframes as gospel. I think they're, I think they're fluid, they could be shorter, they could be longer, but you're right, they did give a certain amount of time on them. I just don't think we should set our watches by, by them right now.
Okay, I agree with that.
Don't get them, Derek. Get back.
I, I agree with that, you know, one of the problems we have is being the summer community is our businesses are gonna hurt big time if they can't get going pretty quick here. What'll happen is they won't, if they don't get going pretty quick, they won't be open. It'll be over. They, they won't survive it. And we'll lose them all. I mean, that's just the way it is right now. And I, I hate to say that, but that's a fact. I mean, they, they're holding out the best they can, but they're not gonna make it. They just will not make it. You know, one of the things about the Cape Cod, everybody knows, is that you pay your bills through July, and you make money in August that's supposed to carry you through to the next season. You know, and, and this, if this doesn't get going pretty fast, they're not, they're gonna be still paying their bills in August, and come next winter, they're not gonna have any money, they'll be broke. And there's not gonna be anybody to help them, because most of this will be over, and nobody's gonna be talking about making, you know, printing money to help them. So we, we really have to be cognizant of this, I mean, this is a real serious issue. And if you think I'm kidding, you just wait and see, it'll be, it'll, it'll be the death blow for a lot of these businesses. All right, let's go on to, we gotta ratify that proclamation for the teachers. Can I just have a motion to approve that in an open session? We, we did it already, but we gotta approve it.
Motion so made, Alan.
Motion made by Alan, and seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, okay, that's good. Discussion of constable reappointments, now, I put this on for discussion, and I don't want to go through a whole lot of this discussion. I just want to authorize, what I want to do is I want to give Jim the authorization, we're gonna let him go and talk to her or she, and talk to Cassie, and, and work this out so that we can come up with the actual paperwork that everybody wants to use. There's a bunch of stuff there, this should have happened a long time ago. It was talked about, it was in the minutes, it was all done, but it didn't get happened. So I just, I think I'm gonna allow Jim to talk to Cassie and try to work out the final details, and then just bring the, the detail back to the board.
I'm moved.
Thank you.
Motion made by Peter.
Seconded by Alan.
Alan, roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Just real quick, Derek, you don't mind me having Doreen in on this too? I think her expertise would be great.
I'm sure she'd, she'd love to work on it, because there was one part that I think we, we should address and think about was the, the town, town ID. And that's it, because I don't want them being thought of, because they're not town employees, our employees, if you look at, so I think that's a great point, I'd love to have that.
You know, and she would be helpful, she could work with Cassie, trying to get the forms formatted properly. I'm glad to get, go in there and get them going, but I'm not gonna do the legwork.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Rich here, it, it might be worth asking the Treasure Collectors Department to send up the Chapter 41, Section 95A, list of fees that were due and payable by April 15. So that might assist Selectmen Moniz and Ms. Slaney in their work.
Well, now that it's on the record, on the tape, I'll make sure that she does that, and I'll have them get it up to you, Jim, and then she can get it to you.
Thank you, and thank you, Attorney Bowman.
Yeah, Rich, can you send that in an email, because none of us will remember the chapter and verse.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's in the, it's on the video now, we've got it on tape. All right, let's, let's move on to appointment of the designee to the Joint Transportation Planning Group. Alan sat on this, and I think I was the co-sitter on this sucker at some point.
You were the alternate.
Yeah.
And in fact, you're still listed as an alternate here. I move that we appoint Alan Slavin as. I move that we appoint Alan Slaven as the Wareham representative on the joint transportation planning group with chairman Tropiano as the alternate.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? Roll call, Alan?
I guess I have to say yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Okay, good. Let's hear that. It says appoint designee to the joint transportation planning group.
We just did that.
I think the next one is the Serpents Commissioner.
I move that we appoint Alan as the Wareham Commissioner to Serpents.
Okay, Alan.
Second.
Alan, is that okay to do since you're the chair, chair over there?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made by Peter, seconded by Jim. Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. Okay.
I just, I didn't know, I mean, do you have to be a commissioner to be the chairperson?
No, you have to be a selectman to be on the commission.
Are you allowed a second position from the town?
Oh, in other words, if you have a chairman from your town, can you have another one?
The chairmans are, the chairmans are basically appointed who's ever on the commission. So if you're not on the commission, you can't be chairman.
That's what I was trying to.
Okay, so we don't, we don't get a bonus member because you're the chairman?
They don't allow me to vote twice.
Okay, all right. I guess Jim was bored. He wanted to go to your meetings.
Yeah, you know, hey, two votes is better than one.
Right.
All right, so I put on next to vote on some of the articles, okay? We, we're obviously, we're going to, let's talk, let's, let's talk about this while we're at it, since Claire's here too. Let's discuss how we're going to do this. Now, Claire, Claire wants to only do the money articles or the articles that are absolutely necessary to do. And so we shouldn't, obviously, we don't need to vote on everything, but we need to vote on the stuff we're actually going to do. So why don't we start that discussion? Claire, why don't you come in here and start that discussion now?
Well, thank you for, for allowing me to weigh in. As you know, through legislation and a formal declaration, we were able to recess our town meeting from April until June fifteenth. There's been some thought that, you know, we're still not out of the woods yet and having people in a room, you know, while we're still having some issues. There's been a lot of concern. I'm concerned about it. So we weren't quite sure how we were going to handle this. So after some discussion with our town administrator and town council and myself with other moderators, for the most part, a lot of towns are moving forward with June meetings, but they're holding them in different ways. And so we needed to come up with a way that we can have our meeting because we need to have a formal budget by June thirtieth. And there are other articles that we need to have a vote on so that the town can continue to run. So, you know, we talked about moving forward with town meeting on June fifteenth. And as of right now, the thought is that we would have it at the high school and have it in the gymnasium. That way we can distance, we can have chairs eight feet apart in the gym, a little more accommodating than the auditorium. If need be, we could move, if we have an overflow, which I don't honestly think we would have, but we would have the cafeteria available. My concern is I don't want to have a lengthy meeting. I think having people together at this point in time, we're, we're still have some concerns about that. So I think what we need to do is take a look at the warrant articles and, in my opinion, just act on the most important ones, which are budgetary items. And that's for the most part what other towns are doing. Some towns are only doing four or five articles just to pass the budget, to get them through, recessing their meeting till July or August and finishing up. The other alternative, you know, if you didn't want to do that, we could adjourn the meeting and then call a special meeting for July or August. There's still some fluidity, fluidity to this, but as of today, the thought would be that we would move forward with it by having our, our meeting in the gymnasium, making sure that we're very careful with people, make sure that they have masks, you know, in order to attend. But I, I really feel very strongly that I don't want to be there for a length of time. I want to get the people in and get them out. And so if we could just have a discussion about just acting on the absolute necessity that we have to act on to make the town run after June thirtieth.
Okay, Derek, you want to weigh in?
Sorry, I'm muted. I, I agree. I know there, there's a couple, a couple items outside of what we call just the budgetary that would be, need to be taken care of, the FEMA maps, I think.
Yeah.
And then selectmen municipal, I know we've got the one with the, with the. Use disposal district, so.
Probably, I mean, we could bring it forward. It might be debatable. Or we could do it at the meeting we, we have later in the summer. I'm not sure what the other towns are doing. I really not too concerned about it. I'm concerned about how you want to do it here. And it would be nice if you could give us a rundown of which articles on both the town annual meeting and the special meeting you would like to, or you feel would be most important to move through and, and to get done. We do have the option too, I believe, for you to do a one-twelfth budget for each month moving forward after July first, if we did not pass a budget. Am I correct on that?
Yes, yes and no. The DOR has to approve it.
Right.
And they, they want, they want to know exactly why you consider it such a public health emergency. So we have the ability to do it. I don't, it does not sound like they are telling, the feedback we're getting, they're telling you it's a great idea to do that. In fact, it looks like they're trying to push you to not do it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Rich here. You know, as you may or may not know, Claire and I are both members of the Legislative Committee of the Mass Moderators Association. And we've been actively involved in reviewing and in some cases drafting some of the legislation that's coming forward. Over the last week and a half, I've been having discussions with people who are dealing with DOR, who are hoping to go the one-twelfth route. DOR's current position is this, they feel that communities have been given the tools necessary to get themselves into June to hold special meetings and that they will approve a one-twelfth budget only if.
How, Derek, what's, what's it look like to have any kind of budgetary numbers in the near future getting to June fifteenth? I mean, we might as well talk about this. It's probably not going to happen that we're going to have them quickly.
No, I've been going through the budget and we can do, I don't, don't have it in front of me, all the info right now. My goal is to get the town, if you will, the, the town's budget, sort of the omnibus, not talking individual departments, the town and the schools budgets to be level funded, which, which means it's a cut from what we proposed beforehand. And we're going to have to do that a couple different routes. One of the things that's changing, what, what we're seeing is a little bit of these soft openings for the restaurants and, and stuff like that helps me feel more secure going with fifty percent collections in the first, instead of twenty-five percent in the first quarter and a few other items. And I think we're very solid at the ten percent of, of state aid, ten percent reduction. My fear is to not take these types of measures and then come roughly October, November, when you'll see a final state budget most likely. Could be sooner. Hope it's sooner. But having to make, if you have to cut one point two million out of your budget mid-year, that you're essentially cutting two point four million.
Yeah, because you're cutting it out of half a budget.
Right, one point two million out of six months of these actions.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, we will, I know the finance committee wanted next week the individual department numbers. And I, I appreciate their, their faith. I don't know that we're, we're going to.
Will not be rewarded.
Yeah, so.
Can you, can you put a list together of the articles that you do want to take the town meeting for next week? So that next week we can deal with them, we can vote on it, whatever we can.
Well, I've got them, Patrick, I've got them right up here. Basically, in looking at it, from the annual warrant, you're looking at articles two through ten, which have some kind of financial impact. Two is recurring business, but that allows you to apply for grants and so on and so forth. So that has a financial impact.
Well, you got all the revolving accounts, all that stuff.
Right, we've got revolving, we've got compensated appointed officials. I'm sure we want to pay our clerk, for example.
Occasional reports we don't need.
Yeah, we don't need occasional reports, so we need two, three, four. Six is the capital plan. I assume we want to go forward with that.
Yeah, we need, just W, just so everybody knows, on capital items, it's only going to be the water pollution control facility. We are, we are freezing all town capital items.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Then we got the budget. Article seven, we've got the EMS budget. We're obviously going to have to do that. The upper Cape budget.
Yep.
And then the water pollution control facility enterprise fund. So those, what about?
FEMA maps fourteen.
FEMA maps fourteen. What about the harbor services receipts?
I would ask that we do those because that's to keep the office functioning on, on those items. And those have been pretty much, Gary gives good information. That's going to be part of the plan and give as much information ahead of time so people, you know, people can be secure while it's voted upon.
Okay, so those, does everybody agree that those would, and Claire too, that those would be the articles that we would bring forward at the June town meeting?
Those are the ones I had on my list.
Okay.
Are we allowed to eliminate the citizens petition articles?
It's not a matter of eliminating. We just take them up at a different time.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying is can we do that?
Well, that, as you well know, that citizens petition article, the one that's on there is going to be probably a test, pretty testing thing. Could keep you there a long time. So I say we move it over. I think Claire, might it, might it be better just to continue this meeting to another time after we get the budgets and stuff passed?
We can. I mean, we could recess the meeting to a date, we, we'd need a date certain, July or August.
That way that stuff stays in place and we don't have any issues with, okay, you didn't take it up at the meeting and blah, 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 you know?
You know, I'm not trying to be insulting here, but I'd have to say if, if somebody in the midst of a global pandemic is concerned about naming a school and that's their big item and they're going to cause, cause a ruckus over that, then shame on them.
Well, I don't think that's going to be the case.
It's, it's probably a good point, but you know what I'm saying. That way we, we keep ourselves clean. Because let's ask, because I think Rich, 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 that, that's problematic if you, if you don't take up the citizens articles and say, okay, we're going to put them on the, the special that we're going to create in August because you didn't take them up at that town meeting, right? Isn't that a problem?
There's a fine point here. Under, under chapter thirty-nine, all you are obliged to do is to place citizens petitions on the warrant. Once they're on the warrant and once they arrive at the town meeting body, town meeting can dispose of them however it pleases.
Oh, that's awesome.
It could choose to act on certain items. It could choose to defer other items. Now certainly, if the, if the Board of Selectmen wanted to do this, it could, doesn't have to. Promise to call a special town meeting time in the summer to put all the stuff that got passed over at the annual and take it up then. But, you know, that's a political decision.
No, no, I mean, that's great. That's great to know. So, so we could do that. We could dissolve the meeting and then just create another meeting in August if you wanted to. It's up to you guys.
Would we be dissolving or would we be continuing?
Well, you dissolve it. You just can, just get rid of it and start a new one. Start a new.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there's a reason why you might want to bring finality to what you do at the end of June on town meeting. And that is so that if you continue the town meeting, nothing's really final until the final gavel falls.
Okay.
Reconsideration.
Yeah, and sort of to, to, a less harsh way of my previous point is, I'm sure if you asked the proponents of that article, they wouldn't have, wouldn't have a problem.
Okay, great.
And you know what? If, if you guys want, I can work with Rich and Claire and come up with, come up with a plan for the board to look at next week of which articles would be the essential financial articles to be voted on at the scheduled town meeting and which articles would go on to a new warrant for a special to clean up the rest of the business.
I would like you to do that, Peter. I, I'd like a motion to allow them to do that, please.
Sure.
Motion so made.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Alan. Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. Okay, so you've got it. Go get it done. So next week we'll have it in front of us.
Quick point here. Article fourteen on the flood planes, FEMA flood planes, there's two parts to that.
Right.
One, one is the flood plane designation to accept the maps. And the other is a change in zoning. That can be contentious. All right, because I'm not, I'm not in favor of the change in zoning. We discussed this before.
Yeah, we did, and neither am I, by the way.
So I, I, something needs to be addressed on that. I, I know that we may have the ability to approve the flood plane zoning changes or zoning maps. If the legislature pushes it through, it might not be an issue. But I'm just saying right now that I'm, I support the second part of that article. And I really don't like to see them tying things together, which are really not within the same realm.
I believe it's fair of the residents as well.
Well, we could, we could, we could move at town meeting to bifurcate that article.
Divine question.
I was just going to suggest that.
Yeah, and then just move to approve the map.
If the moderator would allow it.
Yeah. I don't know. She's pretty tough.
She sounds like she would. She would weigh it in.
It's extreme, it's extremely important that we pass on the maps.
I agree a hundred percent. I'm just, I'm just saying, it's, you know, we should divide the article. And I said that a month ago. And I, I really don't like planning articles coming as a lump. You know, they're packaging it and.
Not a problem, Jim.
Yeah, they packaged it on purpose, Jim.
Well, I understand.
You caught it.
Not the first time.
Well, we, I, I, I mean, I didn't think, I didn't think when we finally voted on that it was going to pass anyway. But still, you know, it's, I think that we could do it. Okay, so that's fine.
Thank you.
All right, so, so that, that makes Jim happy, makes me happy. And I think it'll probably make you guys happy too.
Yep.
So, all right, so that's, that's terrific. All right, so next week, Peter, okay?
Yep, I'll have it. I'll, I'll, I'll conference with these two and we'll, we'll get it straightened out and get a, get a, get a plan for you guys to vote on next week.
All right, any other town business not reasonably anticipated? Last twenty-four.
One question before we go to that. On the special spring town meeting, are we going to pull those articles too?
We're going to do the same thing. Yep, we're going to just, if there's anything relevant to finance, it'll, we'll take it up. If it's not, it'll go, it'll go to another meeting.
Yeah, because on this, Alan, we've got budget transfers, fund the parking program, again, a spring twenty twenty capital. I don't know if that's going to be anything.
There are a couple of articles in there that have to be taken up.
Like W, like WCTV's payment, we got to do that so they get the money. So, so we'll, we'll figure those out and get a list out.
Thank you.
Yeah, otherwise our Zoom meeting would suddenly shut off.
Yeah. We're going to be nice to that Ruiz guy now.
The shutdown would happen. All right, town administrators report, please. Do you have anything else, Derek?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hold on, let me see if I can pull it up real quick and I'll give you a synopsis. The, the CDVG program is being allocated, not us, but overall, an additional, for the Commonwealth, additional ten million dollars. And it's a, we wouldn't get it automatically as we're a mini entitlement. We're not an entitlement. But this is actually competitive grants. And I just want to let you know some of the eligible uses of the funds. And I just wanna let you know some of the outward uses of the funds for our area, and one of them is short-term rental and mortgage assistance, which isn't, the, the town wouldn't be doing that. We don't need to take any action. But, uh, the DHCD is making, is, uh, making up to ten million dollars in CDVG funding to provide emergency rental and mortgage assistance to income-eligible residents. And it's gonna distribute these funds through the existing Raft administrating agencies. So Raft is, uh, res- residential assistance for families in transition. For Wareham, these funds will be distributed by Housing Solutions of Southeast, Southeast Mass. Wareham does not need to do anything about this, as these funds will automatically go to the, the, those, um, agencies called the RRAs. However, the town, we wanna publicize the availability of this assistance. So, um, we'll reach out to Housing Solutions of Southeastern Mass and, uh, see if we can't get something out on the website. We definitely wanna let our residents know that are, are feeling the pinch, that are eligible for this, to, to please apply for it. You know, that's short-term rental and mortgage assistance. Um, the next one is, uh, and I think this is important for us, to go for a competitive, uh, grant process, which is micro enterprise assistance. Municipalities can use these funds to provide grant funding of up to ten thousand dollars per business to micro enterprises adversely impacted by COVID-nineteen. This assistance can be used to facilitate economic development through the stabilization, expansion of the micro enterprises. For the purposes here, the term micro enterprise means a commercial enterprise that has five or fewer employees, one or more of whom owns the enterprise. So it can't be a home-based business. Uh, assist, we provide it to the micro enterprises under the provision of benefiting low-to-moderate income persons. There are two ways to establish this. One, the owners of the micro enterprise who are low-to-moderate income persons, or a micro enterprise that serves low-to-moderate income neighborhood or community-wide area, uh, in, in which at least fifty-one percent of the residents are low-to-moderate income persons. Uh, so, there's additional requirements on, on there. Um, from being current to all taxes through three-one-twenty, be a for-profit entity. The business has to currently been operate, operating, established before January one. Um, not listed as one of the, uh, the, one of the following business types is, um, not, cannot be listed as one of the following, uh, excluded business types. So these are excluded. Real estate, rental sales businesses, businesses owned by persons under the age of eighteen, businesses that are chains, liquor stores, weapons, firearms dealers, lobbyists, which makes sense, or cannabis-related businesses. So, we can also go for public social services, but our time is of the essence. And they're, they're telling us to regionalize on this approach. So if it's okay with the board, I'd like to reach out to some of the other communities and see if we can't go together in on this, and see, see if we can't, uh, be competitive enough to get some stuff for our businesses. There's no guarantee, but we'd like to go for it.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by?
Alan.
Alan. Uh, roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, four zero zero.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you can, on the next selectman's meeting, can you, well, um, I'll talk to, uh, Peter Sandborn. Can you do a public hearing, please?
Sure.
Regarding this, cuz you have
Yep.
applications due by June fifth. We just got really the whole information, um, yesterday, I believe. So, and we need to have the, uh, hearing five days in advance of it, so.
Okay, alright, so we'll do it, uh, we'll do it next week.
Yeah, we would love to get this for, for our community. We know it's a, we're, uh, small, or these micro businesses are the backbone of our community.
Yep.
There's no guarantee for it, but we're gonna try like hell to get it.
Okay.
I have a question for Rich. Rich, are we allowed to bypass yet the fourteen-day advance on a public hearing?
Well, there's no, uh, unless the statute itself sets the number of days, there's no automatic fourteen-day requirement.
Good, I just want to make sure we don't violate anything.
Nope, you had to have it by five days beforehand.
I understand.
Alright, so, we're all set there. Uh, any, anything else, Derek?
No, that's, um, you know, we, we're continuing going, uh, you know, there, there's so many people we can thank on this. Obviously, our, our staff and departments are doing great. Municipal maintenance has, has been, you know, for lack of a better term, killing it, getting the beaches ready, especially Little Harbor, um, going above and beyond for getting, getting, uh, our areas ready for, for the people to start enjoying them again. So we really appreciate their help. Um, you know, and, uh, everybody's doing, doing an amazing job, so really thankful for the employees we have. They're, they're fantastic, and they care about this community, so.
Okay, great. Uh, next would be liaison. Did anybody do any liaising? Go ahead, Alan.
Uh, today was a quiet day. This is meeting number six. I sent off, uh, basic, uh, notes on the first four meetings. Uh, definitely look at the one I sent off on the recreational reopening update. Uh, again, it has a lot of stuff that the state does through DCR. Uh, some of the stuff is, is a little bit different than we're, we're allowing, uh, so we have to make sure we don't run afoul of all that. Uh, I'm not, I went to the details, cuz it would take the, uh, we're pushing good shape overall, but I wanna emphasize again, as I said before, May eighteenth was not the day things go to open, uh, and the opening will be slow. The first opening is very short, May twenty-fifth starts, which is actually Memorial Day, and the state did this on purpose, cuz they were afraid if they opened up for Memorial Day weekend, there'd be such amount of traffic jams and everything else that it wouldn't work. So they actually planned to start on Memorial Day itself, for one day only of the weekend. And, uh, restaurants and stuff, like I said before, they're trying to figure out something there. Uh, and, uh, again, I'll emphasize that it's a minimum of three weeks between phases. It all depends on what the, the part, when the public health comes back for numbers. Everything's based on how the medical report comes back, is what they do. So it could be shorter, it could be longer, but you have to, you know, tell me your, your basic, uh, results you're getting. Ask people also, please be patient with all this. So it's, it's not an easy decision for anybody to make, uh, basically people's health risks is, you know, economy. You know, it's a tough decision. I'd hate to be the one that has to make it. Uh, but at the end of the day, someone did make it, and we have to follow it. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else have any liaising?
Yeah, I, um, I, I did the virtual, uh, planning board meeting, which was, was interesting, and they sent me the, uh, the packet and, uh, was able to follow it, um, nicely. And, you know, with these, with these zone meetings, the boards could utilize the, um, the whiteboard and project the maps and information related to the hearing which is taking place, which is a public hearing. Um, they use a Dropbox. So if information is sent via Dropbox, I, I think that would be a good way moving forward for committees to, uh, utilize that, pull it up and project it while holding their public hearings, and so the public can actually see what's going on. Because with, you know, zoning and, and planning and, uh, CONCOM too, and other, other groups are, you're talking about maps and abstract things. This way, you, you can put, you can actually see what the proponent is, 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 uh, trying to, um, get past and have comment, an educated comment. And not just be sitting out there, always, I don't want it, and this or that, or I want it. Um, so I, I think there's, there's gonna be some good utility that we could capitalize on from these, uh, what's going on right now, moving forward, and, uh, I just wanted to say that.
Alright. Anybody else? Alright, well, we don't have any bills to pay, and we don't have any minutes to, to, to do this week. So that only leaves one thing. Motion been adjourned by Alan. Seconded by, by Peter. Is there any discussion? We can't discuss a motion, so we won't. All in favor, say aye. Uh, no, wait a minute. Roll call. Alan?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. Okay, that's it. Meeting's over. Go in peace.